All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I dread allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an exciting evening with our Chelsea Police Department. I will ask our clerk to please proceed with a roll call.
Counselor Tesher.
Here.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia, absent. Counselor Sandiget.
Here.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Here.
Counselor DeJesus.
Present.
Counselor Brown.
Present.
Counselor Cupro is absent. Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Eight members present, you have a call.
Okay, I will now ask our longest standing counselor, Counselor Robinson, do you have a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to suspend the rules so that we can move ahead with the police ceremony.
Motion accepted, I will ask our counselors to please come up to the podium to facilitate the ceremony.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I'll call the chief, come to the podium.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, thank you, Mr. City Manager, Madam President, and distinguished counsel. On behalf of the entire Chelsea community, I extend my heartfelt congratulations to all you being sworn in tonight as new police officers and to those being promoted. This occasion marks the beginning of a noble and challenging journey in service to our community, for our new offices, and the continuation of being leaders and role models for our new sergeants, lieutenant, and captain. Your commitment to upholding the values of justice, integrity, and public service is commendable, and we are confident that you will positively impact the Chelsea Police Department. As you embark on this important chapter in your careers, we want you to know that your dedication to protecting and serving our residents is deeply appreciated. As new officers and leaders, your roles are vital in fostering a sense of safety and security for all you serve. We believe in your ability to carry out your duties with professionalism, empathy, and fairness. As you take the oath of office, remember you are not alone in this journey. You are joining a team of dedicated individuals who share a common goal, to ensure the well-being of our community. Lean on your fellow officers, seek guidance when needed, and continue to grow personally and professionally. Once again, congratulations on the significant achievement, and may your careers be filled with success, fulfillment, and positive contributions to our community. Stay safe, stay vigilant, and thank you for your service.
At this time, I'd ask the clerk to come to the front of the podium. I'll turn back to the chief to do the introduction.
Yes, good evening. Very proud to have six new officers join our team, who just went through, I'm sure, a grueling six-month-plus journey, and I always never want to forget their families who endured the journey with them, which is probably more difficult. So, we're going to call these officers all up, and they'll be sworn in together, then we'll have a pinning by their family members, which I'll call. So, we're going to call first up Officer Joseph Arasso. And Damian Straight.
Can you raise your right hand if you'd like to?
Aye.
Aye.
Christina Quijada.
Joseph Arasso.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
In a firm.
In a firm.
That will faithfully.
That will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
Of the Chelsea Police Department.
Of the Chelsea Police Department.
According to the best.
According to the best.
My abilities.
My abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
For the City of Chelsea.
For the City of Chelsea.
So help me God.
Now, for the most important part of the evening for these six new officers, the pinning of the badges. I'll call them all up. For Officer Arasso, it's his mother, Maureen Arasso. For Jamil Santiago, it's his father, Jose Santiago. For Officer Pina, it's his mother, Delia Pina. For Christina Quijada, it's her two children, Christie and Nathaniel. And for Officer Baez, it's his grandmother, Bertha, and father, Moises. And for Damian Straight, Officer Straight, it's his wife, Larissa. in our new sergeants, so if you... Thank you so much. Next will be our two new sergeants, and just quickly, the sergeant's job is the most difficult to transition into because you're transitioning from, you know, following call after call after call, to actually now making decisions for these new officers. And both these offices are outstanding. I spoke to one in the hallway, I'll keep it to ourselves, but it's probably one of my smartest moves, ensuring we had a new extra sergeant. And the other sergeant, equally fabulous, and sadly, they work the midnight shift, so I'm sure they're trying to get off of it. But first, it's Officer to be Sergeant Scott Sato. They have been actually sergeants for several months, but I'll call them as what they should have been, Officer Anthony Ortiz. Now it's Sergeant Anthony Ortiz.
Right, please raise your right hand if you'd like to. Aye.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a sergeant.
As a sergeant.
Of the Chelsea Police Department.
Of the Chelsea Police Department.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my abilities.
Of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
For the City of Chelsea.
For the City of Chelsea.
So help me God.
Now, for the important part, for the two new sergeants. Sergeant Scott Sato, his wife, Tracy, and daughter, Hope and Elizabeth, will be pinning. And for Sergeant Ortiz, his granddaughter, Alanis, and his girlfriend, Yolanda Vales, will be pinning. Next is the rank of lieutenant. Again, a very transitional job when you become pretty much off the streets to being a manager, and it's very difficult for a lot of people to make that transition from actually managing several offices and all that goes on in a community like Chelsea on your shift. And the new lieutenant has done that quite well, I have to say, also on the midnight shift, so there's a theme here. When you first get promoted, I guess that's where you end up. But please, we'll call up our new lieutenant, Lieutenant James Guido.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a lieutenant.
As a lieutenant.
For the Chelsea Police Department.
For the Chelsea Police Department.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my abilities.
Of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
For the City of Chelsea.
For the City of Chelsea.
So help me God.
And again, a very proud moment, even more proud because of the lineage and heritage of being a police officer. Pinning Lieutenant Guido's badge on will be his dead retired police chief at our next city over, the City of Revere. So, chief, come on up and pin your son. Okay, last, as you move up the ranks, there's only one more rank before me, and it's the captain, which is, again, much higher on the management level. You really have your hand in the Police Department, operations, policies, and where we want to go in the next few years. This position was added by me, I felt it was a need. This captain was the lieutenant doing all the grunt work, dirty work, that no one probably would want to do. If you watch TV, that's internal affairs and things that keep our integrity internally, externally, image of our department. And it's another great move, great position, and he's a key ally in how we move our agency forward with our other captains. So, Captain Brian Dunn, please.
Aye.
Aye. Brian Dunn.
According to the best.
My ability.
My ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
For the City of Chelsea.
For the City of Chelsea.
So help me God.
And very quickly, before I introduce his family, who will be pinning the badges, just to let you know, his mother, Maureen, who is there, I'm not mentioning his father at all, sorry, Jack. Maureen worked in the Police Department for so, so many years, mentoring me as a young officer back in the eighties, always just a kind-hearted person that took care of everybody who came into the station, so I know that's where the captain got his goodwill. So, to pin Captain Dunn, it's his wife, Laurie, and his children, Brian Junior, Rose, and Max. We all know we're experiencing challenging times in not just Chelsea regionally, in the world. I'm truly grateful that you do have well-trained, great officers who actually love our community. I truly mean that, and great leadership from the city manager and you all, and whatever little hiccups, we will definitely get through, so thank you all.
On behalf of the City Council, off rock, congratulations to everybody. At this time, Counsel Brown moves to take a five-minute recess under suspension. Seeing no objections, so move, you can take pictures in front.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, especially the City Council. We all know we're experiencing challenging times in not just Chelsea regionally, in the world. I'm truly grateful that you do have well-trained, great officers who actually love our community. I truly mean that, and great leadership from the city manager and you all, and whatever little hiccups, we will definitely get through, so thank you all.
Thank you, chief. On behalf of the City Council, off rock, congratulations to everybody. At this time, Counsel Brown moves to take a five-minute recess under suspension. Seeing no objections, so move, you can take pictures in front.
Now, for the most important part of the evening for these six new officers, the pinning of the badges. I'll call them all up. For Officer Arasso, it's his mother, Maureen Arasso. For Jamil Santiago, it's his father, Jose Santiago. For Officer Pina, it's his mother, Delia Pina. For Christina Quijada, it's her two children, Christie and Nathaniel. And for Officer Baez, it's his grandmother, Bertha, and father, Moises. And for Damian Straight, Officer Straight, it's his wife, Larissa. All right, our six officers could just move off to the left temporarily while we swear in our new sergeants, so if you... Thank you so much. Next will be our two new sergeants, and just quickly, the sergeant's job is the most difficult to transition into because you're transitioning from, you know, following call after call after call, to actually now making decisions for these new officers. And both these offices are outstanding. I spoke to one in the hallway, I'll keep it to ourselves, but it's probably one of my smartest moves, ensuring we had a new extra sergeant. And the other sergeant, equally fabulous, and sadly, they work the midnight shift, so I'm sure they're trying to get off of it. But first, it's Officer to be Sergeant Scott Sato. They have been actually sergeants for several months, but I'll call them as what they should have been, Officer Anthony Ortiz. Now it's Sergeant Anthony Ortiz.
Right, please raise your right hand if you'd like to. Aye.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a lieutenant.
As a lieutenant.
For the Chelsea Police Department.
For the Chelsea Police Department.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my abilities.
Of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
For the City of Chelsea.
For the City of Chelsea.
So help me God.
And again, a very proud moment, even more proud because of the lineage and heritage of being a police officer. Pinning Lieutenant Guido's badge on will be his dead retired police chief at our next city over, the City of Revere. So, chief, come on up and pin your son. Okay, last, as you move up the ranks, there's only one more rank before me, and it's the captain, which is, again, much higher on the management level. You really have your hand in the Police Department, operations, policies, and where we want to go in the next few years. This position was added by me, I felt it was a need. This captain was the lieutenant doing all the grunt work, dirty work, that no one probably would want to do. If you watch TV, that's internal affairs and things that keep our integrity internally, externally, image of our department. And it's another great move, great position, and he's a key ally in how we move our agency forward with our other captains. So, Captain Brian Dunn, please.
Aye.
Aye. Brian Dunn.
Do solemnly.
According to the best.
According to the best.
My ability.
My ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
For the City of Chelsea.
For the City of Chelsea.
So help me God.
And very quickly, before I introduce his family, who will be pinning the badges, just to let you know, his mother, Maureen, who is there, I'm not mentioning his father at all, sorry, Jack. Maureen worked in the Police Department for so, so many years, mentoring me as a young officer back in the eighties, always just a kind-hearted person that took care of everybody who came into the station, so I know that's where the captain got his goodwill. So, to pin Captain Dunn, it's his wife, Laurie, and his children, Brian Junior, Rose, and Max. I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, especially the City Council. We all know we're experiencing challenging times in not just Chelsea regionally, in the world. I'm truly grateful that you do have well-trained, great officers who actually love our community. I truly mean that, and great leadership from the city manager and you all, and whatever little hiccups, we will definitely get through, so thank you all.
Thank you, chief. On behalf of the City Council, off rock, congratulations to everybody. At this time, Counsel Brown moves to take a five-minute recess under suspension. Seeing no objections, so move, you can take pictures in front.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, especially the City Council. We all know we're experiencing challenging times in not just Chelsea regionally, in the world. I'm truly grateful that you do have well-trained, great officers who actually love our community. I truly mean that, and great leadership from the city manager and you all, and whatever little hiccups, we will definitely get through, so thank you all.
Thank you, chief. On behalf of the City Council, off rock, congratulations to everybody. At this time, Counsel Brown moves to take a five-minute recess under suspension. Seeing no objections, so move, you can take pictures in front.
Now, for the most important part of the evening for these six new officers, the pinning of the badges. I'll call them all up. For Officer Arasso, it's his mother, Maureen Arso. For Jamil Santiago, it's his father, Jose Santiago. For Officer Pina, it's his mother, Delia Pina. For Christina Quijada, it's her two children, Christie and Nathaniel. And for Officer Baez, it's his grandmother, Bertha, and father, Moises. And for Damian Straight, Officer Straight, it's his wife, Larissa. All right, our six officers could just move off to the left temporarily while we swear in our new sergeants, so if you... Thank you so much. Next will be our two new sergeants, and just quickly, the sergeant's job is the most difficult to transition into because you're transitioning from, you know, following call after call after call, to actually now making decisions for these new officers. And both these offices are outstanding. I spoke to one in the hallway, I'll keep it to ourselves, but it's probably one of my smartest moves, ensuring we had a new extra sergeant. And the other sergeant, equally fabulous, and sadly, they work the midnight shift, so I'm sure they're trying to get off of it. But first, it's Officer to be Sergeant Scott Sato. They have been actually sergeants for several months, but I'll call them as what they should have been, Officer Anthony Ortiz. Now it's Sergeant Anthony Ortiz.
Right, please raise your right hand if you'd like to. Aye.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a lieutenant.
As a lieutenant.
For the Chelsea Police Department.
For the Chelsea Police Department.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my abilities.
Of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
For the City of Chelsea.
For the City of Chelsea.
So help me God.
And very quickly, before I introduce his family, who will be pinning the badges, just to let you know, his mother, Maureen, who is there, I'm not mentioning his father at all, sorry, Jack. Maureen worked in the Police Department for so, so many years, mentoring me as a young officer back in the eighties, always just a kind-hearted person that took care of everybody who came into the station, so I know that's where the captain got his goodwill. So, to pin Captain Dunn, it's his wife, Laurie, and his children, Brian Junior, Rose, and Max. I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, especially the City Council. We all know we're experiencing challenging times in not just Chelsea regionally, in the world. I'm truly grateful that you do have well-trained, great officers who actually love our community. I truly mean that, and great leadership from the city manager and you all, and whatever little hiccups, we will definitely get through, so thank you all.
Thank you, chief. On behalf of the City Council, off rock, congratulations to everybody. At this time, Counsel Brown moves to take a five-minute recess under suspension. Seeing no objections, so move, you can take pictures in front.
Now, for the most important part of the evening for these six new officers, the pinning of the badges. I'll call them all up. For Officer Arasso, it's his mother, Maureen Arso. For Jamil Santiago, it's his father, Jose Santiago. For Officer Pina, it's his mother, Delia Pina. For Christina Quijada, it's her two children, Christie and Nathaniel. And for Officer Baez, it's his grandmother, Bertha, and father, Moises. And for Damian Straight, Officer Straight, it's his wife, Larissa. All right, our six officers could just move off to the left temporarily while we swear in our new sergeants, so if you... Thank you so much. Next will be our two new sergeants, and just quickly, the sergeant's job is the most difficult to transition into because you're transitioning from, you know, following call after call after call, to actually now making decisions for these new officers. And both these offices are outstanding. I spoke to one in the hallway, I'll keep it to ourselves, but it's probably one of my smartest moves, ensuring we had a new extra sergeant. And the other sergeant, equally fabulous, and sadly, they work the midnight shift, so I'm sure they're trying to get off of it. But first, it's Officer to be Sergeant Scott Sato. They have been actually sergeants for several months, but I'll call them as what they should have been, Officer Anthony Ortiz. Now it's Sergeant Anthony Ortiz.
Right, please raise your right hand if you'd like to. Aye.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a lieutenant.
As a lieutenant.
For the Chelsea Police Department.
For the Chelsea Police Department.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my abilities.
Of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
For the City of Chelsea.
For the City of Chelsea.
So help me God.
And very quickly, before I introduce his family, who will be pinning the badges, just to let you know, his mother, Maureen, who is there, I'm not mentioning his father at all, sorry, Jack. Maureen worked in the Police Department for so, so many years, mentoring me as a young officer back in the eighties, always just a kind-hearted person that took care of everybody who came into the station, so I know that's where the captain got his goodwill.
Okay, the twelve.
Alright, let's resume. I will now move us to memoriam and celebratory resolutions.
We have a resolution introduced by Council President De Jesus and all members of the City Council for Black History Month. Whereas in nineteen twenty-six, historian Carter G. Woodson, the child of enslaved parents, announced the second week of February to be Negro History Week to celebrate and study the accomplishments of African Americans. And whereas Woodson believed that teaching of black history in schools was essential to ensure the intellectual and physical survival of African Americans, arguing, quote, "If a race has no history, it has no worthwhile tradition. It becomes a negligible factor in the thought of the world, and it stands in danger of being exterminated," end quote. And whereas African American educators and students at Kent State University in Ohio first proposed Black History Month in nineteen sixty-nine with the first celebration taking place at the university in February nineteen seventy. And whereas in response to growing observations around the country, President Gerald Ford recognized Black History Month in nineteen seventy-six during the celebration of the United States' bicentennial, urging all Americans to, quote, "Seize the opportunity to honor the too often neglected accomplishments of black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history," end quote. And whereas Woodson's organization, now known as the Association for the Study of African American Life and History, has designated the theme of this year's Black History Month as African Americans in the Arts, noting, "In the fields of visual and performing arts, literature, fashion, folklore, language, film, music, architecture, culinary and other forms of cultural expression, the African American influence has been paramount." And whereas the Lewis Latimer Society in Chelsea invites residents to attend a week long, a weekend of cultural programs, speakers, and family-friendly programming at the Museum of Science on February tenth and eleventh from ten AM to four PM. And whereas the Chelsea Black Community will host several events, including a month-long educational gallery at City Hall that showcases black history through photos, and a free community celebration featuring guest speaker Dr. Jessica Peeble, Chief Diversity and Cultural Officer at RFK Community Alliance at the Williams School on February twenty-ninth. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council recognizes February two thousand twenty-four as Black History Month in the city of Chelsea, acknowledges the achievements of black Americans throughout our nation's history, and encourages the continuation of its celebration to raise the awareness of this community's accomplishments for all Americans.
How does the council wish to proceed?
Adopt this shenanigans under suspension if there are no objections. And I also understand we're gonna suspend the rules, there's gonna be a performance.
I'm sorry, can't hear you. Repeat that, Counselor, I'm sorry, cannot hear you.
I said that adopt this shenanigans under suspension, and I understand there's a performance that's gonna take place? Is that correct?
Yes, there was a performance that our school delegate, our school committee delegate had organized, but actually will not take place today. But we will be having more information and updates on that soon. Thank you, Counselor. Does anyone wish to speak? Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I wanna thank you for making a motion of this resolution. Also, just encourage folks to go out, as the resolution speaks of, there's plenty of events that we can go out and enjoy and engage, and get to know some of the culture, the history, the reason why we celebrate Black History Month. As the resolution stated, it's been celebrated since nineteen seventy-six. It's something that we do as African Americans to bring other groups together and show them our culture, show them our backgrounds, show them our support of other individuals, and work together and bring in harmony, love, and inclusion. And it's just great that we celebrate so much here, as we just had tonight. This swearing-in with so much diversity is still in our city, means so much to us. So I ask that if you're not doing anything, as the resolution stated, the Latimer, Lewis Latimer is hosting an event at the museum. I know CBC will be hosting events on February fifteenth and the twenty-ninth, where they will be just highlighting folks locally that's making a difference in our community. I know when we think about the, the resolution, we think about that your name has to be written in stone, and you have to be done something so great. But all of us here, when we go out and do what little we can do to make our community a better place to live, to engage and accept people from their different backgrounds, it makes our history here that much more stronger. So I'm glad to be able to speak on this resolution. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other speakers? Okay, moving on to public hearing. Anyone wish to, uh, sorry, moving on to public speaking, anyone wish to speak this evening? Okay, you have four minutes, please state your name and address.
Good evening, Counselors. My name is Anna Haddingham. I'm the Director of Youth Programs at La Collaborativa. I've invited a few of our youth leaders tonight to share a little bit of testimony. Recently, in light of the recent budget cuts to youth jobs funding at the state level. If you hadn't heard the news, Governor Healy approved a budget that takes us from twenty-eight million dollars down to fifteen point seven four million dollars. As an organization that definitely relies on Youth Works funding to bring jobs to over two hundred and seventy-five youth in Chelsea every year, on top of that, a seven hundred person-long waitlist for jobs, we're very concerned about this funding. So we wanted to present this to you with the motive of seeing what local solutions we can find at the municipal level. And so here to speak a little bit on the importance of continuing to prioritize and fully fund youth jobs funding in our city. And so I'm just gonna invite some of our youth leaders to speak about the impact that these, that the state-funded jobs have, state and city-funded jobs have had in their lives. And I do hope it can be considered a priority as you move ahead in planning over the next few months.
Good evening. My name is Raul. I live in Forty Comestry. A second-generation immigrant Latino and a Chelsea resident, who grew up with a goal in his mind, that was to provide for his family in a way to show gratitude and make himself a role model.
Could you please speak into the mic?
Yes.
Oh, you want me to go closer? You want me to repeat it? Okay.
Perfect.
Who grew up in a goal in his mind, that was to provide for his family in a way to show gratitude and make himself a role model for the next generation and succeed. Academically, for his dreams of being financially stable. But that cannot happen because the governor has decided to cut youth job funding at a state level, creating a big problem for Jews, including me, which made me overthink once again. That question that comes around my mind. Is, is this my fault? Is this because we don't work enough? I keep overthinking. While I try to go to some rest, I wake up every day. I pray for another place for food, that was all I can do. Forget my breakfast, go to school, have enough energy to do my chores and get to my job as well. Meanwhile, I'm in school, my mom sends my call, this time she called, and she said, "I quit. I cannot do this anymore, with these poor conditions. What if I had not spent English, I'm a simple janitor or not even that." I said, "But Mom, I cannot pay the rent or food by myself." And she used to reply, "If this doesn't work, you might have to go to school so we can pay the rent." I keep with my day, less conscious of the situation. I go, I keep facing the problem on my way to work. Where my eyes are not the same, my smile has stopped shining. I go with my Jew group. We can't believe this decision. We discussed within the idea of sending a message to the governor in order to make a change, and make him reconsider this radical decision. Me and the Jew advocate for admitting, we can be here, and with your testimonies can change the governor's perspective. Because if the governor doesn't reconsider this action, me and the Jew community around Massachusetts will not be able to make it through college. Because if I don't fight against this decision, who will? I got a purpose in my life now. It is to keep and save thousands of jobs. Because if I don't, I will get lost in a small town, where my only future is become something that I don't wanna be, and have a poor salary where I can barely survive.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Steven Calix. I live in fourteen and East Road. Ladies and gentlemen of the, of the council, I feel that was disrespectful towards us youths, the decision of Governor Healy to cut down the budget from youth funds. As youths and adults proposed an increase of twenty-eight million dollars, rather they were met with a decrease of sixty million. However, whatever demands that were set were not met, and the future that was not, that was not wished came to fruition. As a youth of Chelsea, I am part of a majority that represents the working class. If I wish to work, I should be given a chance to do so. It also seems from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-one, there was an increase of funds, which led to more youth jobs and opportunities. But now those times have disappeared, just like those funds which were forty million to sixty million. If such things is permitted to continue, it can mean another cut in the budget next year. I see that in the coffin of interest, you reach a proper solution. As an individual like me, I should be looked after as a part of the next generation of the society, and not be rattled away. Furthermore, organizations like Youth Works, and I Have a Future, and La Collaborativa have been on the side of the youth for decades. Some have supported the, supported the challenges of youth, like protecting their wages, and now as is their jobs. So lastly, I'd like to address my final statement as a personal anecdote. I remember that another youth, who I wish not to disclose, had worked with my group, had worked with our group to support her family, and the same can be said for those who still work in my cohort. I also have been, I've also have done the same as them too, to be a provider for my own family, pay rent, and pa- and help my mother in getting groceries. I've had to do, no, I'd just like to say my best regards.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Henry, and I am fifteen years old, and I am here to ask you to prioritize youth funding. I think that the budget being cut to a lower amount of money was not a good decision, because it is affecting a lot of youth with jobs or without jobs, or youth that are still waiting to get a job. And I am also against it, because some youth need to provide on their own or have to help their family, because in the city of Chelsea, everything is super expensive. And some families need a help, so they send their kids to work. And cutting the funds is not going to help that. Also, I am asking if you could please, in a way, to get the fund back up for the youth working in the community of Chelsea. And try to convince our state to funding back up to previous levels.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Cede. I'm sixteen years old. I'm in the tenth grade, and I go to Chelsea High. Living in Chelsea can be really hard and very da- very dangerous. Every kid in Chelsea is trying their best to make sure they come home safe. Some kids have to steal out local stores to get what they want. Some kids wonder when the fridge will be full again, or won't, where, or when they will have a plate, when they will have a plate, their plate full again, or when they will be food on their or when there will be food on their plates again, or when they will have new clothes. So the collaborative decided to put things in their own hands and give back to the community. Not only did they give back to the community, they helped younger kids get through the struggle of Chelsea that has put them through. These jobs can also get some kids off the streets from dangerous activities. Many students have even started doing good mentally and physically, because of what mental health in the youth jobs has taught them. So we would, if we wanna see more change to our community, we ask for your support to fund youth jobs in Chelsea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, hello, my name is Jason. I'm in tenth grade. I'm writing to express the critical need for thirty-three million in funding to support youth employment, investing in Massachusetts. Currently, we have a promising opportunity, as the governor has pledged to allocate sixteen point eight million towards this cost. This funding is essential to address the pressing, the pressing issue of youth unemployment. In our state, with full thirty-three million, we can implement compensation programs that ha- that not only provide immediate job opportunities, but also offer skill building and training for the youth, ensuring sustainable impact on their future employment. To allocate sixteen point million. While appreciated falls short of meeting the conversation needs of our youth employment and activities, with the full funding, we can create a wider range of employment opportunities and vocational training programs, possibly influencing the lives of thousands of young individuals.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nathalie. I'm fifteen years old. I'm here to ask you to prioritize youth jobs funding, and here's why. As someone who comes from Chelsea, a small town with lots of struggles, and with youths who don't know what they want for themselves or for their futures, we don't get enough opportunities, and the times that we do, we don't get paid enough or noticed enough. It makes me feel like at the end of the day, what the government only cares about is the number and not about the people who actually needs to be heard. For an example, I have so many friends that have two jobs at the same time, and yet they don't get paid enough, and they don't oh, my bad, and yet they don't get paid enough, and they have to give that money to their parents for bills. And that money isn't enough for whenever, for whenever they try to speak up, they never get heard, or they get, or they don't get the support that they need. They only get to hear, "Oh, I'm sorry, but I can't really do anything." "Oh, I'm sorry, but you need to keep trying." Those kids are tired of hearing the same thing over and over again. They don't want to hear that. They are actually looking for a solution, but how is that possible when the governor cut our funds very low? I just hope you've real, you guys really consider increasing funding at the local level and help us solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jules Hernandez. I am sixteen years old. I am a sophomore at Northeast Metro Tech, but I do live in Chelsea. I am also a youth worker at La Collaborativa. I am here to ask you to priori- prioritize youth jobs funding. La Collaborativa provides mental health, training, and youth jobs. These resources help the youth get better physically and mentally. Cutting youth jobs can really affect the youth personally, because you don't know what they're going through at home or in their personal life. You don't know who youth have to give their hard-earned money to. They might have to support their family or siblings, even bring food to the tables or just provide for themselves. Cutting youth jobs mean you're also cutting youth opportunities in different programs, and not just this area. That means they might not be able to ha- able to do mental health sessions or even youth jobs. Other youth deserve the jobs and opportunities we have. If youth jobs had more funding, we would be able to hire every young person and teach them skills, instead of youths, youth in the community getting money in illegal ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Before moving on, I just wanna clarify for the youth who just spoke. We don't usually deliberate these conversations on the floor during these meetings, and so I just wanna make sure you understand. We hear your stories, we thank you for sharing them with us, but we don't usually have conversations. However, you may have counselors reach out to you afterwards. Thank you so much for sharing your stories this evening. Alright, moving on to approval of the minutes.
We have approval of the minutes of the regular meeting's date of January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
Make a motion to accept and file under suspension, Ms. Clark.
Motion accepted. Seeing no objection. Moving on to communications from the city manager.
We have a copy of a communication received from city manager Fidel Maltese responding to council order two four seven two, noise study from Logan Airport. Dear Counselors, I am writing in response to your recent council order requesting an update on the sound study requested by the city council related to noise from airplanes passing over Chelsea from Boston Logan International Airport. The city contracted with a firm called Vionair to review aircraft operations at the airport and complete a noise exposure assessment. This firm has several industry experts who worked on the project on behalf of the city of Chelsea. Vionair submitted their report to the city of Chelsea, which is attached for your review. I met with the firm recently to review the report. The firm highlighted that Boston Logan International Airport recently completed an update to the noise exposure map, but that this latest map was based on twenty-twenty operations, which were significantly impacted by the COVID-nineteen global pandemic. Vionair recommends that the city of Chelsea encourage Logan Airport to redo the exposure map using twenty-twenty-three data, since airport operations have now reached ninety percent peak pre-COVID numbers of twenty-nineteen. I will be contacting Massport's Community Advisory Committee to make this request. Vionair is available to answer any questions from the city council at a council subcommittee meeting, if this is the wish of the council.
Do I hear a motion from our Counselor Brown?
Accept and file a communication under suspension, Madam President. I'd like to speak on it briefly.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanna thank the city manager for fast responding to this request. We put this request in our last meeting, and we have a response. I wanna thank the company for the work that they did in getting us this response, and also giving us some ideas and what went wrong, and what, what significant impact that we do have here in Chelsea. And the summary report highlights a lot of things that we can do. I believe our next step as a city is to engage in conversation with the residents, stakeholders in Massport, to come to some agreement, some strategy of how we can reduce the impact of noise that's in our community. I spoke briefly with the city manager on the report. Did not get to read the report entirely, but I did read a significant amount of it, and I look forward to working with the city manager and his administration to engage and pursue and address Chelsea's concern regarding the findings on this report. And also, we will be bringing the company in again, as they have stated in this report, that they were willing to be able to answer some questions. But I believe we as a body need to get together and have a discussion prior to that. So look forward to working with the city manager on this matter. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Yes, Counselor Kelly Garcia.
I'd like to echo my, the sentiment of Counselor Brown. To the community, I am also with you, right? There's so much noise that we hear as residents here in the city. If we don't have a plane flying overhead, we have the train horn. And I want you all to know that this council has it as their top priority and are actively working on figuring out how to get our quiet zone back in the city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Tashi?
I agree one hundred percent with, you know, both Counselors, Calvin and Counselor Kelly Garcia as well. You know, looking at the report, I'm looking at the data that's being provided to us, and it seems that the data being used is four years old now, going up to twenty-twenty. We know the report also suggests that, you know, because of the pandemic, a lot of that report was definitely, you know, underreported because of the amount of planes were going down. But now we're back to normality, and now we're looking at a lot more airplanes. And this is, you know, again, one of those instances in which we need to stand up, and we need to, you know, address those issues and, and go directly to the problem. You know, we, we need that quiet zone, you know? And so I wanna thank the city manager as well for taking, you know, quick initiative about sending us this report. And, you know, if the council can also be useful at handling those talks, then we'll be there as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Okay, moving on.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Fidel Maltese responding to council order two four six eight, dog waste dispensers. Dear Counselors, I am writing in response to your recent council order request regarding dog waste dispensers. Our Department of Public Works is incredibly
Thank you, Counselor.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Fidel Maltese responding to council order two four six seven, LED streetlights. Dear Counselors, I am writing in response to your recent council order regarding our streetlights. Our previous city manager and city council provided significant funding to upgrade streetlights to brighter and bigger LED lights. As you know, I was previously your commissioner
Madam President, I'd ask that we waive the rest of the reading and accept and file the communication under suspension. There's no objections.
Seeing no objections.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Fidel Maltese responding to council order two four six six, update on ARPA funds. Dear Counselors, I am writing in response to your recent council Dear councilors, I am writing in response to your recent council order requesting an update on ARPA funds. The city of Chelsea has received close to forty million dollars from ARPA funds. Twenty-five million was allocated to major capital projects that provided significant benefits to our community, including the replacement of the turf to Highland Park, renovations of the Williams School Playground, renovations of our E-nine-one-one building, and funding for water and sewer and downtown Broadway. Fifteen million dollars were allocated to community priorities after significant community engagement. A community allocation plan was drafted and shared with the city council. This allocation plan is on our website. Our staff has been working hard to ensure these community priorities are met. We request that the city council schedule a subcommittee on conference to receive a full update on ARPA funds.
Madam president, I move that we accept and file the communication under suspension. There's no objections.
Seeing none. Thank you, councillor.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Fidel Maltese requesting city council's subcommittee on municipal aggregation. Dear councilors, we communicated the exciting news to the city council that we have received approval from the Department of Public Utilities for our municipal aggregation plan. Over this past month, we have been working on our rollout plan. We will ensure that the rollout is transparent and collaborative. We request that the city council schedule a subcommittee on conference to receive a full update on this program and this rollout. We will invite several community partners, as well as our consultant, the Peregrine Group.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Accept and file the communication under suspension. There's no objections.
Are we moving?
Move to a subcommittee on conference.
Okay. Thank you, councillor. We are moving this to a subcommittee in conference.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Fidel Maltese requesting reappointment to boards and commissions. Dear councilors, pursuant to section four dash two of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend the following individuals to boards and commissions in the city for reappointment to the Board of Assessors, Mr. Fellow Goldberg and Kathleen Carlin Ruggeri of Chelsea for new three-year terms. For reappointment to the Licensing Board, Ms. Marnie McAlpin of Chelsea for a three-year term. For reappoint- for appointment to the Licensing Board, Mr. Ennio Lopez Perez of Chelsea. For appointment to the Planning Board, Mr. Christian DeJesus Franco of Chelsea. For appointment to the Planning Board, Ms. Naomi Zabat of Chelsea. I respectfully request your approval of these reappointments. Copies of their resumes for the new appointees are attached.
How does the council wish to proceed?
Move to, move to a second reading. Seeing no, there are no objections?
Councillor Robinson moves to a second reading. Seeing no objections.
And the reason being, if anybody has any questions, they can have dialogue with the candidates. That's normally why we move to a second reading.
Thank you, councillor.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Fidel Maltese requesting approval for a department to pay prior year expense. Dear councilors, I am writing to request approval for the Department of Public Works to make a payment of a prior year expense from their respective FY twenty-four budget. From time to time, municipal agencies are unable to effectuate payments to a vendor in the year that the goods or services are provided. When such instances occur, the city council must approve the payments from the current year department budget for the prior year's obligations. Currently, we have identified an outstanding prior year city obligation that totals fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty cents. Their respective department has sufficient funds to meet the outstanding obligation. No new funds are required. The only action necessary is council approval to make the payment. A copy of the recommended order is attached.
How does the council wish to proceed?
Accept and file the communication under suspension. There'll be something coming up under new business.
Thank you, councillor.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Fidel Maltese regarding capital improvement plan FY twenty-five through twenty-nine. Dear councilors, pursuant to the obligations under section five dash four of the Chelsea City Charter, please find attached the proposed capital improvement plan, CIP, for fiscal years twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-nine. This document marks the twenty-six consecutive plans submitted to the Chelsea City Council, a significant milestone in the fiscal management of our community. Strategic capital investments play a pivotal role in ensuring the sustainability and prosperity of our beloved Chelsea. A well-planned and well-executed infrastructure program is the cornerstone upon which a thriving and resilient city is built. The enclosed capital improvement plan continues the city's commitment to utilize city reserves and our fiscal strength to enhance the quality of life of our residents. The plan highlights our commitment to pursue outside funding and leverage grant opportunities that can offset city expenses. The proposed total investment for FY twenty-five is in excess of thirty-one million dollars. The list of projects includes major building and roadway investments, climate resiliency efforts, and open space improvements. We firmly believe that these priorities align with the needs of our community. We are dedicated to working closely with the city council to ensure projects are implemented efficiently and responsibly. In accordance with charter requirements, I ask that the city council move this capital improvement plan to a public hearing. Following that hearing and the council's final determination on this plan, we will prepare and submit recommended orders for implementation of the FY twenty-five proposals. I look forward to working together with the city council to accomplish the goals of this newest plan.
Make a motion to move to committee on conference and also schedule a public hearing.
Councillor Robinson refers to a conference and public hearing. All right, moving on to next business, communications and petitions to the council.
We have a communication received from Chelsea resident Jade Franco regarding concerns about speeding motor vehicles in the areas of Congress, Highland, Maverick, and Willow Streets. Dear Chelsea City Council, I write to you as a concerned resident of the city of Chelsea. I have lived on Maverick Street since April twenty-twenty-two. I enjoy my area of Chelsea and love that so many youth and families in our city visit the nearby Boys and Girls Club, Highland Park, and the mosque. These three sites attract hundreds of youth and families each month seeking recreation, worship, and fellowship with one another. It's common to see kids playing kickball on the street on Eastern Avenue or running between Willow, Maverick, Congress, and Highland Streets to the playgrounds and basketball courts. The neighborhood is a vibrant gathering ground to people of all ages and from dozens of ethnic backgrounds. In the spring and summer, it's delightful to hear sounds of laughter and cheering on the air on my block. I do truly love living here and look forward to being a resident for many years to come. However, I am deeply worried about the safety of residents and visitors to my neighborhood because of the speed of vehicles driving down our streets. Unfortunately, many drivers speed in this area and drive recklessly. I have called the police on several occasions when I have seen or heard drag racing in the middle of the night. I am worried that a child may be hit by a speeding vehicle in the daytime. I am also worried that a resident may be struck by a vehicle at night or that a car may crash into a household or building nearby. Therefore, I write to you requesting that speed bumps be installed in this neighborhood so vehicles are forced to slow down and thus enhance the safety of all. Please consider adding speed bumps on the following streets in my neighborhood. Highland Street between Marginal and Central. Eastern Avenue, Willow Street between Marginal and Central. Maverick Street between Highland and Willow, and Congress Avenue between Highland and Willow. Thank you for your consideration.
How does the council wish to proceed?
Accept and file the communication under suspension. There are no objections?
Seeing, are we sending this councillor to traffic and parking?
Yeah, I would refer to traffic and parking.
Thank you, councillor. We are sending this communication to traffic and parking. Moving on to committee reports.
We still have one more.
Oh, I apologize. One more.
We have a communication received from councillor Robinson regarding a letter sent to the Boston City Council expressing support for passage of the Homeland Security Grant for the Bos- Metro Boston Homeland Security Region. Dear colleagues, I am reaching out to you regarding the resolution introduced at our last meeting on January twenty-second directed to the city of Boston regarding the proposed grant from the Department of Homeland Security for the communities in the Metro Boston Homeland Security Region. The Boston City Council has responsibility to approve the grant in question, a grant that in the past has provided the city of Chelsea around four hundred thousand dollars per year in funding for our first responders to have the training and equipment they need to prevent and if necessary, respond to disasters and acts of terrorism. After rejecting the grant once in December, the Boston City Council considered the grant again during its meeting last week. Unfortunately, council moved the grant to committee. In response, I submitted a letter to the Boston City Council President Ruth Z. Logine expressing my support for passage of the grant due to the benefit it will bring to Chelsea and the other communities in the Metro Boston area. My letter is attached to this communication.
Oh, accept and file the communication under suspension. For the record, I did hear back from two councillors from the city of Boston thanking me for the advocacy and supporting the four hundred thousand coming to Chelsea and also in support of the grant that relates to nine other communities.
Okay, chair recognizes councillor Robinson wishes to accept and file communication. Councillor Jimenez?
I just wanted to also mention that the grant was approved at the last meeting, is my understanding, from the Boston City Council.
Thank you, councillor. All right, moving on to committee reports.
We have a committee report received from councillor Saniget, Chair of the Subcommittee on Public Safety, regarding the committee meeting held on Monday, January twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four.
I'd like to speak on, yeah.
You have the floor, councillor. Is there a motion on the floor?
Yes, to accept and file under suspension, seeing no objections, and I'd like to speak on it, please.
You have the floor.
So, we had a very fruitful meeting. The Subcommittee, Subcommittee on Public Safety met with the chief and were introduced to the command staff and had a tour of the station, and at that time, it was decided that we wanted to continue our conversation, particularly considering the uptick in crime in the city of late, specifically as involved the youth. So, we, you'll see an order under new business for us to meet again, and for the foreseeable future, we'd like to meet every two weeks as we continue to work together to try to come up with some solutions.
Thank you, councillor. Do I hear anyone? Okay, councillor Kelly Garcia.
See, I'd just like to thank the leadership of councillor Saniget and the Subcommittee on Public Safety for acting so quickly on this matter. The safety is our top priority, and so I just want to give you all a shout out, and of course, a shout out to, to our city manager, Fiden, and our chief of police, who answered every single question we had, and the police officers that were there present and who are eager to work with us on this subject. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Tashi?
Thank you, madam president. I would just like to first say thank you to the Chair of the Subcommittee on Public Safety, councillor Saniget, for providing that report, and thank you to councillor Kelly Garcia as well for giving those thanks. As a member of this Subcommittee on Public Safety myself, I can attest to the level of interest that this council has taken on the ongoing increasing slightly, though increasing violence in our city. We, we are no stranger to that, and at the same time, I want to say we are better prepared than ever to be tackling those issues. After conversations with our city manager and the chief of police, the superintendent, you know, I have seen and I have confirmed that Chelsea is more than ready to be tackling those challenges and those issues that are most pressing to us. We have the police department already piloting, piloting the plan of the youth hub, which is a support system for youth that are being, you know, facing challenges, being at risk, and maybe engaging in illegal activity because they have no other, no other, you know, support system to turn to. And that is why now we, you know, want to make sure that we are tackling, we're providing that. We are also seeing the work of the Department of Public Works actively working to make sure that our streets are being clean and that any vandalized streets, any vandalized walls are being painted over and that our Chelsea, that our Chelsea, our city looks nice and neat. We also have nonprofits working to keep our youth engaged. You saw tonight, you know, a lot of, lots of kids coming in and advocating for jobs because they want to have something to do. They want to have jobs, they want to be entertained, they want to have something that they can provide as well, because our whole city is struggling, and we all got to work together to be able to tackle those issues. So, with that, I just want to say, you know, give a huge thank you to our president, Norel Elisa Jesus, for engaging in those conversations and, and encouraging the council to be actively fighting for the issues that we feel most passionate about. So, thank you to that, and last, Chelsea is in good hands. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Taylor.
Thank you, madam president. I'm also a member of this Subcommittee, and I just wanted to say just two things that haven't really already been said. First of all, I thought the meeting was a very productive first meeting into first getting the information about the existing uptick and, and especially the youth violence and the police departments and, and the city's response to that with establishing a youth hub, which I think is a great idea. It has certainly worked in the, in the regular Chelsea hub model, and I think that any time that the city can be proactive in addressing problems, that is so much more productive than being reactive once the problems have already been established. I also want to let people out in the public know that, you know, this is, this is my third term on the, on the city council, and for the first time since I've been here, I really feel a willingness for this council to really work together in order to solve these problems. And, you know, it's not all about this councillor or that councillor, or, or I believe this, you believe that, and so we're going to be at each other's throats trying to, trying to make a point. This is about solving problems. I thought that the, the Public Safety Subcommittee was emblematic of this, and so I want to commend everybody who, who was involved in this, and, and it's a breath of fresh air, folks. So, I just wanted to let the people at, at home know that there's, there's a, there's a change here that I think is going on, and I think it's positive. The other thing that has not been mentioned is I, I look forward to in partly addressing the concerns of the youth violence in, in Chelsea, the rebuilding of our Chelsea youth sports. So, so this is, this is a, a priority, I think, that the council has. We're going to meet tomorrow to discuss our priorities, and I look forward to establishing a special committee on this in the next meeting, hopefully, and we can get to work on really rebuilding Chelsea sports, something that works for our community, something that our community can really participate in and have full confidence in, and something that we can, can really teach our youth some valuable lessons as they, as they grow. So, thank you. I appreciate all you guys' help. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. All right, moving on to second readings.
We have a copy of a communication received from city manager Fidel Maltese being read for the second time, requesting approval of an appointment to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board. Dear councilors, pursuant to section four dash two of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend the following individual to board and commissions in the city for reappointment to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Ms. Kelly Shombly of Chelsea. The term expires June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. I request approval of this appointment.
Make a motion for roll call on the vote of approving the adoption.
Councillor Brown moves to a roll call vote.
The yes vote is to adopt. Councillor Tesher?
Yes.
Councillor Taylor?
Yes.
Councillor Vega?
Yes.
Councillor Tenary Garcia?
Yes.
Councillor Saniget?
Yes.
Councillor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Councillor DeJesus?
Yes.
Councillor Brown?
Yes.
Councillor Coopero is absent. Councillor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
And councillor Robinson?
Yes.
Ten members in favor, zero opposed, one absent. The appointment is approved.
All right, moving on to the next order of business is new business.
We have an order introduced by councillor Taylor. Order that in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section sixty-four, Budget Management Procedures whereby costs incurred in FY twenty-three were not paid and are owed to the vendor, and to meet this obligation, funds are required from the current FY twenty-four budgets respectively as noted. The city council authorizes the following expenditure to satisfy the unpaid balance from the prior year. FY twenty-three DPW in the amount of fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty cents to Weston and Sampson for upper Broadway service design.
Councillor Taylor, how do you wish to proceed?
I'd like to move this to the Ways and Means Committee.
Seeing no objection?
Without objection. We have an order introduced by councillor Saniget. Order that the Subcommittee on Public Safety hold regular meetings with the city manager Fidel Maltese and Police Chief Keith Houghton to maintain an ongoing dialogue on public safety concerns in the city of Chelsea.
Councillors, Lisa Saniget?
Yes, I move to adopt unanimously under suspension, seeing no objections.
Seeing no objection?
And we'll note that it's going to take place. We met at the police station last time, but we're going to meet here this time on Monday.
Perfect. Thank you, councillor.
Next, we have an order introduced by council president DeJesus. Order that a meeting of the Subcommittee on Conference be held with city solicitor Cheryl Watson Fisher and the members of the four hundred steering committee to discuss ongoing plans for Chelsea's four-hundredth anniversary celebration.
I'll move unanimously under suspension. And actually, I know that the president has met with Cheryl to talk about the four hundred, and actually, the, the council, we are committed to being in the parade. We have a vehicle that will provide for all of us to ride in the parade. And actually, we're looking for people, more people to come out in the community and participate.
and that's part of why we want to get together and talk about this meeting.
Thank you councillor.
Next, we have an order introduced by councillor Jimenez Rivera. Order that a meeting of the Subcommittee on Rules and Administration be held with the city solicitor to discuss the Subcommittee Agenda Setting and the process for requesting Subcommittee meetings.
Councillor Jimenez Rivera, how do you wish to proceed?
Motion, motion to adopt unanimously under suspension and I'd like to speak on it.
You have the floor.
So, after a few conversations with a couple of councillors and the city solicitor, just kind of, and then we received a memo from, from, from Mr. Cunningham that, you know, essentially there's some kind of confusion about what the rules require and what has been prior practice in the council in terms of scheduling Subcommittee's and whether an order has to be put in in order to schedule it or not. And so, we, I was thinking that it would be a good idea to have a conversation about what has been the prior practice, what are the benefits and, you know, kind of drawbacks of that and just figure out if there's a way where we can have more timely scheduling of Subcommittee's while also making sure that the community knows about the Subcommittee's that are happening. So, that was the purpose of it.
Thank you councillor. Moving on.
Next, we have an order introduced by councillor Jimenez Rivera. Order that a meeting of the Subcommittee on Labor and Workforce Development be held with the city manager and city solicitor to discuss the status of pending contract negotiations with municipal unions.
Councillor Jimenez Rivera, how do you wish to proceed?
I'd like to withdraw the motion.
Motion withdrawn. Moving on to public announcements. Any public announcements? No? All right, meeting adjourned.
It's fine.
Moment of silence.
Moment of silence.
No, actually, a couple of public announcements. Excuse me, in regards to this weekend, the Museum of Science will be free to Chelsea residents on, on February 10th and also on February 11th from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. There is a website that you can go on and submit your name and you'll be allowed to get into the museum free. And also, next Monday night at 6 o'clock, the city manager is going to present in this chamber to the community what his first 100 days looks like. So, I want to make sure that we get that out so people can watch. People have been asking a lot of questions as to what's going on. We normally have the State of the City Address in February, but being that it started in January, be unfair to present something. So, I figured the best way is to talk about this first 100 days.
Thank you councillor. Yes, councillor Jimenez Rivera?
Just on the same vein about the first 100 days, I would just like to note that up on the city website, we have a list of all the listening session events that are happening with the city manager. I know that there's a, the next few Wednesday evenings are happening at the different CHA properties and then there's a whole bunch of others. We, we have one at the school. So, if you're interested in attending any of these, just please go to the website and check out the, the events there. And also just many thanks to the city manager for all the good work he's doing on the listening session.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Kelly Garcia.
Team, we are in the month of February, so I'd like to wish all of our students throughout Chelsea Public Schools a safe and fun February break and to the staff and teachers, enjoy a restful break. And then secondly, as the delegate to the school committee, I will be sharing going forward the indicators of success on a monthly basis so that we are all aligned and understand and, and know what's going on within our schools. And so, stay tuned for more details. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Okay, meeting really adjourned.